Say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Aaron Ash.
Let us all bow our heads, close our eyes for a moment of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we ask for your presence today. Father, we ask for your guidance and we ask for your favor. Lord, I pray for a blessing upon those that are behind me, Father, this team that you have assembled for such a time as this, Father. Lord, I pray for them for a spirit of unity upon this team, Father, despite the distractions, despite the elections, despite the things that have taken place, Father. May they pull together as a team and do what you have purposed them to do, Father. I pray for an anointing upon them to encourage them, enable them, and empower them to do all they have purpose to do, Father. Lord, and I pray ultimately, we pray for your will to be done. We pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and all God's people say.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, will you call the or the row, please?
Councilmember Blair.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Chedister.
Here.
Mayor Protemneal.
Here.
Mayor Madrigal.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we've established the quorum and can continue with the business of the city. At this time, council, is there any, can I get approval for the agenda, or are there any additions and/or deletions that need to be made? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed to public comment. Oh, just been reminded by our city attorney, there's nothing to report out of our closed session items. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. Time reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. This time, anyone who wishes to make a public comment, I do have two cards. I have one from Ms. Connie Walashin.
Good evening, Connie Walashin, 523 C Street, Lamoore. I noticed that in closed sessions, there's, seems like the city of Lamoore is being sued a lot. Yeah, and what's up with that? I know you can't tell me a whole lot, but, and then I would like to know the status of the industrial park, the Voorhees project, if you guys could update us on that. And to revisit the Chris Com contract, maybe that could save, I noticed the budget was kind of down. Maybe you could save $3,700 a month if you could revisit that, so, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you get an answer back?
I'll get back to her.
All right, Mr. Reed.
Tom Reed, 1060 Parr Avenue, Lamoore. First of all, Mr. City Manager, nice hairdo.
In your honor, Mr. Reed.
Mayor, councilmembers, in the Bible, 1 Corinthians 6:12 says, "All things are lawful unto me, but not all things are expedient." Free speech is a wonderful thing, a bedrock of our rights, however, because we have the right, it does not mean we should. Who here has a daughter? Some of you do. Should your daughter come home from school and said she was called a hoe, doesn't matter who said it, you would be the first person to the principal's office the next morning demanding action be taken against that individual, and rightly so. Should your child come home from school and say he or she was called something derogatory about their ethnic background, and all ethnicities have derogatory terms directed their way, again, you would be the first person in the principal's office the next morning demanding action be taken against that individual, and rightfully so. De meaning language should not be tolerated in any medium, especially for those in our society who should be examples to the rest of us. I have said it before more than once, this is a fractured council, which is pathetic since we're about 18 months since the seating of those most recently elected, and I place some blame on each of you. The city of Lamoore deserves better than a council who has members with seemingly no respect for other members. Votes are seemingly being made for or, not for or against an issue, but for or against another council members. That's deplorable. During the previous city council meeting, it was said a council member stated having been stopped by the Lamoore Police Department a total of six times in a two-month period. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Also, the Lamoore Police Chief stated that the council member had actually been stopped a total of three times in a nine-month period. Evidently, none of the stops resulted in a citation being issued. Whether the number is three or six, it would appear on the surface that said council member was receiving preferential treatment. Here's the problem I have, both cannot be correct. Therefore, we have two highly placed members of the city of Lamoore making contradictory statements. When I walk into this chamber, I expect members of Lamoore City Government to be truthful. I can suppose that one or both were less than truthful, and I would expect that one or both would have the integrity to admit to their misstatement and provide an apology to the residents of Lamoore. Otherwise, whenever I attend a city meeting or listen to any statement from a city official, I cannot be sure the truth is being told. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Anyone else with public comment tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move. We do not have any ceremonial presentations tonight. We'll move to Section Two, which is Department and City Manager Reports.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We have a few tonight. We'll start out with Police Chief Daryl Smith.
Mr. Reed, that was very well said, and I appreciate that comment. Thank you. Each year, unfortunately, there are 140 to 160 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy enacted into law the National Peace Officer Memorial Day. That is held on May 15th every year, and the week which May 15th falls on is National Peace Officer Memorial Week. So I'd like to invite all of you who support law enforcement to the County Government Center on May 16th, Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. to pay tribute and honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. So I would appreciate your attendance, and this year I happen to be the keynote speaker, which is an incredible honor, and I look forward to paying tribute and honoring the following officers, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Hallwell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I just wanted to report that we received an application for a small, single-family housing project on the south side of 198 off of Vine Street. There already is a project there, it's been there for many years, off of Cabrero. This will be an extension of that project. It already has a vesting tentative map. It's for the completion of that project, which will be 36 units. G.J. Gardner is the one that's proposing to finish that project off, and I just wanted to let you know about it because we're taking the major site plan review to the Planning Commission on May 14th. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Glick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Giving you a few updates on the recreation side. The Lamoore Youth Committee is going to have their first meeting on Thursday, May 17th at 5:30 p.m. in the CMC Recreation Conference Room. Currently, the recreation staff are winding down spring programs, and we're getting ready for summer programs. We're interviewing aquatics staff. The Lamoore Pool is going to be open this summer, so we'll have an aquatics program. We're going to run swim lessons and public swim from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And in addition to that, our day camp staff, all of our staff is returning, so we're getting ready to have some trainings for those staff and get things going for our summer program. The Mother and Me Tea is scheduled for Saturday, May 12th at the Civic at 2:00 p.m. And the National Senior Health and Fitness Day is Wednesday, May 30th at the CMC from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a few updates. So one, the mic should be sounding much better this evening. I'd like to thank staff, in particular Juan Cuevas out of Parks and Rec. He's a DJ on the side, so he knows a lot more about this gadgetry than a lot of us, so he came down here and helped us out. Also, Ray Greenly came down, did some fine tuning this afternoon. We had staff in here earlier today talking over the mics and going live to make sure the feed could be heard out there, so I want to thank those to get our audio backup. Secondly, I received, we received a letter from a resident of one of our LLMDs. I'd like to read it in real quick. It just says, "Dear City of Lamoore, I would like to thank landscapers Joe and Sal." I hope their names, I have their names right, as I have a hard time remembering names. "On Friday, April 20th, they were working near Hanford Omona Road and Cinnamon. Earlier in the week, my grandson had lost his wallet at the bus stop on Monday. Well, Joe and Sal found my grandson's wallet. All his ID was intact. They promptly returned his wallet. At the same time, my grandson was sanding in line at the DMV, Joe and Sal prevented my grandson from paying a replacement fee. Please commend Joe and Sal for their hard work and kindness. Thank you." Pam Cabrillo. So, I think this is a great testament to the kind of people that the city is putting out there to do, to do work on our taxpayers' dime. And it's just nice to see that there's some honesty and integrity back there. And I would like, you know, to bring these individuals in, just give them a certificate on behalf of council for being upstanding and making a difference in somebody's day. I concur.
I agree.
And then lastly, coming out here is, I would just like to remind council that if there's an individual with staff that our ordinance requires that they go through me and we talk about that disagreement, and I would, please, let's continue that. We don't need to have staff issues out there for interpretation. If there's an issue, please make it an appointment to come see me. I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
All right, move to Section Three, Consent Calendar. We have four items on consent calendar. Are there any items that council would like to see pulled from consent?
Yes, I'd like to please pull items 3-1, 3-2, 3-3, and 3-4 for further discussion, please.
Okay, so we will go ahead and pull all those items, and we will go ahead and start with item 3-1. That's the approval of the minutes, regular meeting.
I just, I wanted to make a comment before we proceed because I'm sure I'll be able to either way, but I find it highly unethical and kind of an abuse of power to bring in partisan fights, internal fights, no different than if Lions Club or Kiwanis Club was having a fight and paraded around for public discussion. And so I am just noting that I think a lot of the additional items in that packet were unnecessary and, in fact, make our whole city look bad, so I will not be voting in favor of the approval of that, but I wanted to make known why.
Are there any particular items you want to call out specifically that are in here, that shouldn't be in here?
Well, for example, the emails within, they're emails of the Democratic Party of a club, and I just, I for the life of me cannot understand why that would be entered into public record for discussion in a nonpartisan seat of council. That makes no sense to me.
Okay. Is there any other further comments, questions? Any public comment? Would you like to say something? Is there public comment on this item? You can come forward, please.
Kristen Curcio, 745 Birch Avenue. And the problem that I'm having with this is where's the Brown Act training and the Roberts Rule of Order training? Once you bring something to the public and bring it to the city council, it becomes public record. When all of these things are talked about in public, associating the city of Lamoore, they become public record. They have to be in the packages. They were discussed, and they're for public knowledge.
Thank you. My, again, my reason for stating that I don't think that they serve a purpose here, again, is my text messages to my daughter after school aren't public record either. My, you know, emails to my husband aren't public record. There are some things that absolutely should be brought up for public record. There are other things, when they're brought in, and everything in the kitchen scene included, it is a lot more an abuse of power for the people that are doing that and controlling an agenda and controlling what can be entered and not using the discretion that I think that they should use. And that is why I'm not voting to approve the minutes.
Okay, is there any other discussion by council or any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve item 3-1.
A second.
All right, so there is a motion by Mr. Chedister and a second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Chedister.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
No.
And I vote aye. Minutes are approved. Go to item 3-2. This is approval of budget amendment, Water Department, additional water meters and boxes. Ms. Blair, you are, Mr. Rivera, would you like to speak on this one?
See what's the question.
What's the questions that you have, Ms. Blair?
Well, I just, I would like all of our items to be open and transparent to the public, so please explain what these additional water meters and boxes are and what they will do for the public.
With the, with all the development that's occurring with subdivisions, the original budget, we had a meter, water meter amount. So what occurs is that during the building permit fee issuance, we actually charged for a water meter and a box where we recouped the money, but because of all the construction that's occurred, we do not have enough of those meters in stock to handle the demand. So the utility manager just requested they have a stock of water meters in order to handle the request for water meter and box installations.
Okay, thank you.
And so what is the advantage of doing that?
Usually, just time, you know, just they're in-house, you know, the guys can just go to the back, pick up, you know, handful of water meter, meters and boxes. It's been typical to do that. I think just with all the development that we've had this year, you know, in comparison with other years, I think it's, you know, just caught us by surprise, but.
So would you say it provides, it allows us to provide better public service and be more expedient about placing the meters?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Does it also decrease your downtime, because if you had a bad meter, you didn't have the meter on hand? How would you meter the water to the residents, or how would you install the meter?
Absolutely, yeah. The meters aren't just for new services. There could be for replacement meters.
Right, or be in the middle of the night at 3:00 in the morning.
Correct, yes.
And so my only, my only question in bringing this up, aside from, I like, wanted to bring this just for the public knowledge, is we're talking about our budget and trying to tighten our belts here and there, and I'm just wondering if there's a way, if, I know if you want to have a few extra on stock, but is there a way to kind of have an analysis of just how many we really need? Is there a tipping point where we have more than we actually need that's actually saving us on time? And in fact, we could free up that budget to use somewhere else.
Yeah, so the way that we can better forecast is that usually the developers try to final about two to three homes, you know, a month. So we take two to three, multiplied by the number of subdivisions should get us, you know, per month cost, and then go through the year. As far as the ones that actually go bad, those are probably unpredictable, but as far as new construction, we can, we can probably better guesstimate that.
This request is for this fiscal year, not for next fiscal year, just in case there's any confusion.
That actually was an expression. Thank you.
Plus two, if I may, on your water meters, what's, what's approximately the time it takes for, when you order a meter through a distributor or company, how long does it take to get that meter in? It might take, I mean, it's according what size it is, if they have it on hand, if another municipality uses it, so.
Normally, the brunt of our meters are probably one inch, you know, most of the residential meters are one-inch meters. Commercials where you're getting landscape meters are two inches, so typically, we like to stock more one-inch meters than two-inch.
And these are something that you just can't go down to Lowe's and buy?
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
Is there any public comment on this? All right, we'll bring it back to council for vote.
Make a motion to approve 3-2 as written?
A second.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Neal. Sorry, Mr. Brown, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Brown, motion, and a second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Chedister.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passed. Okay, we'll go to item 3-3. Approval of budget amendment, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District, LLMD Number One, Zone Seven and Ten, to provide minimal service until the end of June 2018. Would you like to speak on that, or is that?
Sure, I can take that. So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So, you know, as you know, we did the transition from contractors over to in-house in November of '17. After the recent rains, we've had some complaints coming in from some of these zones. We've actually have run out, exhausted some funds in a few of the zones. This one here does not affect the reserves, but what we're asking is to take some money from the city manager's professional services contract, about $4,200 of it, that, as I forecast to the year-end budget, I'm not going to need that money for the city manager's budget and to put into these zones so we can provide the minimal service to get them through the end of the year to start the next year-end budget. So this is really about community and neighborhood livability.
So I had two questions regarding this. One, just for clarification, because I think this is one of those issues that if we don't clarify early on, because I think some members of the public might be scared. These are the zones that were significantly more in the hole than the other zones. Is that correct?
Yes, these are zones that we're actually going after 218 hearings to increase the revenues in those zones.
Right, and so as opposed to some of the other zones that are going to see some increases, these two zones were significantly in the hole, much more so than others. And as we're going through and making corrections and making sure that things are up in order, these zones, in effect, when you say provide minimal service, that means literally that minimal service. So we're talking just basically trimming and cleaning up around the sizes. Is that a?
Yes, it would be the minimum service, and Frank may correct me, but if I'm not mistaken, would be we're going to make sure we keep it mode, and instead of edging it every two, every other time, you know, it might be just once a month until we get to the new fiscal year, so, yeah.
Can you just reiterate the streets or the surrounding areas of where these two zones lie in the city, please?
So Zone One is our biggest zone we have in the city, and that entails Hanford Omona Road to Cinnamon from 18th to 19th. All the entries and some of the interiors, and then Fallen Leaf has a lot of landscape there. And then Zone Seven, Frank, you're going to have to remind me where that one's at, top of my head. Oh, is that Silverado? No. Silverado, so that would be, that would be the north side of, is it Silverado the name of the street there? Silverado and 19th, that's area right there, and the grass on the Parkway there is pretty tall. You know, per my direction to staff, I said, hey, if we, till we get the funds, we need to hold off service. But the intent was always to come and get the funding, but not, not, put the cart before the horse and get the funding and then go out and do the work. So I know the residents there have been contacting me, and, you know, not happy, and I get that, and we're trying to do what we can to get them through the end of the year, and then hopefully, we can get these 218s passed. And if not, we won't have that transition year, so we'll know exactly what the budgets are, and we'll come up with a plan to where service won't be disturbed like it was this year.
Okay, so I have two follow-up questions. One with the budget, because it was under, in the hole, and the new fiscal cycles, will we be addressing that number that, or are we making it up is my point, like in those two zones where they were under before? In the new fiscal year, or is there a plan to make sure that they're brought up?
No, so unless 218 hearing is passed by the property owners, the budget will be what the budget is. It's just, when you have, when we had the contractors in the transition, we were a little bit, not a lot overspent, but a little bit overspent when we did the transition, so it kind of left us not as much as we would have liked for the monthlys. But, you know, I think the total of this is $5,800. And, you know, I know there's going to be, a lot of our residents are going to be happy if we can get this one approved.
And then the second follow-up question was just looking at ways of being able to fund some of this. I was thinking outside the box with Hanford Omona Road being more of a pretty trafficked area, a main road, you know, of the city. Is there any possibility of going after some funding that has to do with like roadway cleanup or something in transportation, like with the SB1, for example? Is there a way where we could get away with saying at least part of Hanford Omona Road would be under sort of a major transit area? Is there any way to look at that?
We can look, but right now SB1 funds are mostly for road maintenance. I don't think landscaping is in the scope of the SB1 funds. Linda's shaking her head no, so I think I'm right on that one, but.
I just use that as an example.
Every now and again, they have had grants in the past for some like drug tolerance stuff. Right now, I'm not aware of any out there, but that's the staff constantly looks for.
All right, thank you.
Public comment? Or any discussion, council?
I'll move to approve item 3-3.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Chedister.
A second.
And a second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Chedister.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item 3-3 is approved, so we'll go to item 3-4, Side Letter Between City of Lamoore and General Association Service Employee Union, or Unit.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As you know, several months ago, we went through negotiations with our three bargaining units, and we had an issue come before us at the request of Gas and the City to clarify some discrepancies between the existing MOU and the personnel guidelines. So there are two items. The first is certification pay. So we have water employees that have been previously provided cert pay at 2.5% for treatment certification and distribution certification of the water system. At some point in the past, the MOU had been revised to eliminate the pay of certification for the distribution component, but our practices didn't catch up to that. And so this is our attempt to make sure that the MOU is consistent with city practices, which is that our water employees, whenever they held a treatment or a distribution cert, are paid to the 2.5% stipend pay, up to 7.5%. So if they have more than three certs, they're not paid in addition to that. So that portion is to make us consistent. The second issue is that our MOU reflected alternative work schedules, because we have a lot of departments that work the non-standard Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Mostly our Public Works Department and our Refuse Department. And our previous work week was defined as a Saturday through a Friday. But because of our switch to bi-weekly pay and the way that we do our pay cycles, we needed to switch those work weeks from Monday to Sunday. So that second component is just switching that language to make it consistent with our pay cycles.
Okay, any questions?
Oh, and it's already been approved by Gas. We went through the meet and confer process. I know the city attorney's looking at me like, you missed a component. No, it's already been approved by that union. We've gone through the whole process. They've signed it. They're just waiting for ratification by council.
Okay.
Good. Any questions? No? Is there any public comment? All right, no public comment. We'll bring it back for vote. A motion on this one?
Make a motion to approve 3-4 as written.
A second.
There's a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Item is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go to Section Four. This is a public hearing. 4-1 is General Plan Amendment, 2018-1. It's a request by Victory Ferris Development LLC. Agent is Tim Palmquist. Changed the plan width of Bush Street west of 41 from six lanes to four lanes. Sequel determination covered by 2008 General Plan Environmental Impact Report Resolution 2018-18. It's Mr. Brandt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Steve Brandt, city planner. This is a request, as the mayor said, by Victory Ferris Development LLC. This general plan amendment, normally, when we talk about general plan amendments, we're talking about a land use change, a change to the land use element. In this case, it's a little different. The request is a change to the circulation element. So Bush Street west of 198 is designated as an arterial street, and is, in the general plan, is called out to be six lanes at its ultimate width. The request is to make a change to the general plan so that the ultimate width would be four lanes. In looking at this request, we went back into the original general plan that was approved in 2008 and looked at the analysis that was done in the circulation element, and there's a, there's some big tables in there about traffic volumes and how many lanes are needed to support future traffic. And what we noticed is that the tables actually supported And what we noticed is that the, the tables actually supported four lanes as a maximum on this, on this section of Bush Street. So even though the plan calls out for six lanes, the analysis would, was saying that it, four lanes would be adequate. When you add that to the fact that a number of years ago, we removed some land west of the college from being developable, we believe that the change to four lanes would be adequate and is actually supported by technical analysis that was done in its general plan. So, so we actually used the general plan E I R as the environmental document for this, and the city's attorney's office helped us with the findings on that. So, we took this item to the planning commission, and they have recommended approval of this general plan amendment. So, we are also recommending approval and ask that you, that you take a look at this. And so, if you open to any questions you have.
So how many potential resident, houses were reduced by what you were talking about? We took out some of that land for, I guess it's west of Marsh? Is that correct?
Yes.
So how many less is that?
It was, I don't remember, do you remember? It was around two hundred.
How much, Jim?
It was two hundred and twenty-nine.
There he goes.
Okay. And even without that, the, the tables you were looking at would have supported.
Even if, even if that had still been there, the tables appear to support four lanes.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. So it is a public hearing, so we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to council for discussion and vote. Any more discussion?
Just states here that the planning commission did approve this.
Yes.
Six oh, so, they recommended approval. Just want to make council aware of that.
I, I only had one question, and it's not going to sway my vote either way, I'm just curious. If, when you, when you change the width, it, the ability to have transition areas like the roundabouts, is that going to affect the ability to do that?
That should not affect whether we will or will not be able to fit roundabouts into the, into the interchange area, no.
I'm just curious, didn't really affect my vote.
Council member Blair, I have some draft drawings from Caltrans that with the existing two lanes there, show three roundabouts for the, the west side that are feasible.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Well, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve item four dash one and adopt resolution number twenty eighteen eighteen and approve the general plan amendment twenty eighteen oh one.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Chedester.
Second.
Second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Chedester.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
I vote aye. All right. That one is passed. We'll go to item four dash two. This is another public hearing, and it's a general plan amendment twenty eighteen oh two. It's going to take me a little bit to read this one. An amendment to remove requirements from, for sidewalks with parkways from the general plan, resolution twenty eighteen dash nineteen, and first reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh three, related to zoning text amendment number twenty eighteen oh one. Amendments to portions of the following articles within the Lamore Municipal Code. Article J of chapter seven of title eight, which is roadways and access. Article B of chapter two of title nine, major and minor site plan review and Senate Bill thirty-five compliance procedures. Article B of chapter four of title nine, allowed uses and required entitlements table. Article B of chapter five of title nine, noise, odor, and vibration performance standards, and article F of chapter five of title nine, mural procedures. Sequent determination is section fifteen oh six one B three, general rule exemption. Mr. Brandt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. Apologize for the length of that one, but, so, as you know, we periodically come before you with changes to, to your ordinance. These are based on sometimes state law changes, sometimes just things that come up in the office because of dealing with the, the public and development projects, and so, so this, this is our, kind of our list for, for twenty eighteen on some changes we'd like made in the, most, most of them are occurring in the, in the zoning ordinance. The, the topic related to sidewalks also requires a general plan amendment because those, those requirements are also called out in the general plan. So there's a list of seven topics, and I'm not going to go through each one. If you have a question about one of them, I'd be happy to answer them, but the, the one thing I did want to add is that we, we did, the planning commission did review these in detail and recommended approval of all of them. The one we did add after the planning commission meeting was related to requiring any building in the downtown to go through major site plan review. We had, we recently had some projects, very small projects, like less than two hundred square feet of building space, and to, it just didn't seem appropriate to require major site plan review, because that requires going to the planning commission for something so small. So, we are recommending that change, and I believe you have a letter that the city received from Mr. Stole that's in support of that change. So, again, most of these changes are, are staff initiated. The one of them related to Senate Bill thirty-five is due to changes in state law, and if, if you want to discuss any of these in more detail, we have to do that.
Questions? No? All right.
No.
So we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this. Is there any comment, public comment during the public hearing on this? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Come back to council for discussion. Anymore? Do we have a vote on this?
I'll make a motion to approve item four dash two and adopt resolution twenty eighteen nineteen, approving the general plan amendment twenty eighteen oh two.
Second.
And everything else recommended there?
As proposed.
Thank you.
Second. It's official, all right? So we have a motion by Mr. Chedester and a second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Okay, we'll go to new business. Section five, agreement between the City of Lamore, County of Kings for the provisions of, for the provision of animal control services. Ms. Spear.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. The City of Lamore and the County of Kings have been in a longstanding agreement regarding animal control services since two thousand and six. It was a ten-year contract with the option to extend to twenty eighteen, which we've done, so that means in June of this year, that agreement is set to expire. The county reached out to us and provided us with a new agreement, asking us to bring it before you for council, so we've consulted with city attorney and with the chief. And basically, the City of Lamore employs our own animal services officers or animal control officers, so we do all of our own animal control service calls as far as people calling for loose animals and things of that nature. We are entering into a contract with the county at your approval for kenneling services. So once we obtain an animal, we have to have somewhere to take them. And so we have been, and again, in a contract with them for many years. This is just to kind of ratify the contract. It's a one-year contract with an option to increase or continue on a year-to-year basis for another five years if we choose to do so. The fee structure will remain consistent. They currently charge us based on their fees to provide the services, so it's based on their personnel costs, their apparatus costs, things of that nature, and we anticipate that our budget in twenty eighteen nineteen for the service is going to be roughly a hundred and seventy-six thousand if our calls for service for animal control remain consistent.
Okay. Questions?
I had a question, just after looking over the budget and, and asking a few questions of staff of our operating systems and our, and those updates that I was mentioning earlier that I thought were important. One idea I had thought of, and, and I, hopefully we can explore that thought, is if we made it available easier for citizens to be able to pay their licensing fee online and maybe attach the document to show that their pet is spayed or neutered, the ability for maybe somebody who's working all day long, maybe they don't, really just don't feel like coming in and, and paying their, their fee, but if we had, you know, announcement saying, look, this would really help with these costs, and those costs are increasing, do your part, you know, pay for your pet licensing. I think a, a push of that, if nothing else, it's better than nothing, because I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was three hundred and fifty or somewhere thereabouts licensing fees that were actually paid last year, which is obviously not as many people in the city that have pets. And I would think that a lot of it has to do with just how easy it is or not easy. If we made it very easy, almost like on a silver platter, just click a button, attach, and you can have it done, versus asking somebody to come in, maybe on their work hour, it's more likely that we might get more of a response, but that would, of course, also have the added cost of whatever the upgrade of that system was to allow for that. So, that was an idea that it would, and that might, and that might also work for other licensing fee type things where we're seeing increases of, of those costs, being able to recuperate some of that with our public by making the ability to pay it easier.
Is that something that might be a little easier now that we're having, we're getting our website updated? Is that a potential for something like that?
I would love to answer that. I'll have to get back to council on that one, because that one would have to link back to our e-finance software, and I don't know that we have the capability to do that, but we will look into it and get back to council.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are we currently paying that much for that service? A hundred and seventy-six thousand?
We are and we aren't. So, we are, but the sheriff's office that runs animal control has been very fair to us. If they see a reduction in fees, let's say they have somebody who goes out on leave and they're not paying that person, they pass that on to us. So if they see a, a reduction in their fees, they will reduce ours as well. Don't quote me, because I don't have the exact number, but I think this year we're right around a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and sixty thousand, so it's saying fairly consistent. Obviously, as we have more calls for service, that will continue to grow. But we have a great animal control staff who does their best to find the owners of these pets before it gets that far, and so that helps us keep our costs down.
Do you know how many animals we take to the kennel?
I don't have those numbers. Chief, do you have those offhand?
So the past couple of years, the numbers have been reduced, and for two reasons. Two years ago, there was a shift in policy at the county level that they would no longer take feral cats, if you remember. So there was a decrease in services that we are paying for, but the services didn't go away. So we had to get more creative as to, you know, educating the public on how to handle the cat situation. And also, each year, because of the increase in the animal licensing and the ordinance that we approved two years ago that requires all animals to be spayed or neutered and licensed, the numbers have went down as far as dogs that have been impounded at the county level. And, and like Michelle said, our animal control officers do a phenomenal job of locating the owners before we take them to the kennel. So hopefully that answered your question.
It does.
The exact numbers are in the annual report, and it will show the decrease this year.
Good, thank you. Questions? Any more questions? Now, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council again for discussion and vote.
The only further discussion I want, I just wanted to make it known that I think it should be a priority that we have the most upgraded software, if it's possible, to make it available for some of these fees that we want to capture. Three hundred and fifty licensing fees in a year for pet owners is, is pretty dismal. And I think we can do better than that, but we have to give our staff the tools in which to be able to do that way. And I think that that should be a priority as we revisit our budget. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone want to make a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve the animal services agreement between the City of Lamore and Kings County.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Chedester. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Item is passed, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will go to six, section six, that city council reports and requests. Ms. Blair?
I have two comments, and the first one I'll keep very brief, because I'm, I want to make sure that the city attorney has a chance to stop me if she'd want me to continue. But the first one has to do with the firefighters. A couple of the firefighters asked me to speak with them, and just so you know, several of the guys actually live around my block, I can walk down the street and, and run into somebody. And it became known to me that there was an issue with their pay. Do you want me to continue? Yes, no? And so I became concerned, because I just wanted to make sure that that issue was being addressed. From my understanding, they haven't been paid for quite some time, for a few months, and it, the issue has to do with signing a W nine. But as it was explained to me, and please forgive me if I'm wrong, I may be getting false information, that the fear is that by doing so, that they wouldn't have benefits then, and I don't know if that's, again, I, I want some clarity on the issue, because if it's true that they haven't been paid in several months, and it's just a holdup of just a wait-out game, I think that there are some labor protections that would argue against, are, a contract, you have to negotiate in good faith, and it's been several, several months, and I'm very concerned that, at least from what I'm hearing from some of the guys, is that they feel strong-armed and they feel as though they're not being given an opportunity to address some of their concerns. And so I don't know if there's a proper way to address those concerns, but I wanted to make it known that those were concerns that were brought to my attention.
Okay, so I can tell you, prior to coming here tonight, I met with fire chief Bruce German and Brahm, and we talked about this exact thing, and I have some more documentations that I'll be talking to, to legal about, but you are correct, the, the mechanism for which we pay them, we have not paid them in a little bit. We owe them some back pay, but the intent is to get them caught up when we.
Right, I totally understand that, and I just wanted to make sure that, that the issue had been brought to my attention, and I wanted to make sure that the rest of the council was apprised of this being a concern, and hopefully we can remedy it quickly, because it does seem like it's been going on for a while, and I'd like to see that be made a priority to, to remedy soon.
Yep.
Okay, and then, as far as my.
It's not intentional, though. It's, it's something that we've been trying to work on for quite some time.
Been working on it.
It's not intentional at all.
Aye.
I don't want people to think that.
Yeah, and we, we had a, that, we were going to pay off a W nine, and unfortunately, we're not able to do that, and it was, if we ten ninety-nine a volunteer, they're no longer covered on workers' comp through our RMA. So that was the issue with that, and that was going to be our short-term gap, to get their back pay to them, until we came up with a long-term solution that we're committed to have in, in place to get them, and then for the next year's budget cycle.
I, I can completely understand their hesitance in signing a, a document that would do that to a volunteer firefighter who literally is putting their life on the line as well, and to not, to have the fear of not being able to be compensated should an injury occur or, or even a tragedy, that I can see why they went. But just for clarification, again, I may be receiving false information, but from my understanding, they have not been paid since November. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you can see why I think that this should be a greater priority to resolve, because it's, that's a long time to go without pay. And I would imagine, as we like to trumpet talks of potential litigation against the city, I would imagine that that would be a pretty big red flag for us as a city, and should be addressed promptly. So, so the other comment I wanted to make or report, especially because I, I see so many people love to come to the podium, I just want to tell you a quick story about me, then, since everybody likes to tell personal stories here. In college recently, in my graduate studies, I was told by a professor that I would never graduate, I would never finish my degree, because I was a, I was a, a mother with a lot of children, and that would always be my priority in academia, wouldn't it be? Now, she, I noticed that she only mentioned that to me and one other student in the class, the other student being a friend of mine, and it was soon after we were scolded for speaking Spanish in class, as we were reading a play by Luis Valdez that was impartially in Spanish. When I moved to Lamore, the first week, I was told by a neighbor, a racial epithet. Another neighbor actually sold his house and moved, and in part blamed the couple that bred like rabbits. And I don't think he meant that in a particularly nice way for us. He had some other comments about our religion. I'm Catholic, so that wasn't kind. When I first ran for office, they, the newspaper made sure to mention that I was a Latina and that I had five children. and that I had five children. The newspaper, however, did not mention that I was married with those five children or that I had a master's degree. These are just some of my daily experiences. If you do not walk through life with the acknowledgement that about twenty percent of the people you meet will hate your guts, no matter what you say or do, just by your existence, if you've never had that, you're a part of your reality, then you don't understand my reality. And if you have never experienced the kind of poverty where you literally buy McDonald's cheeseburgers in bulk, when they were offered at thirty-nine cents apiece, which was for a period of time, and store them in your freezer so that you can cut them up throughout the week, because that's your only source of protein, then you really don't know the true walk of poverty that exists in our county and in the state. And as we talk about words that are derogatory, though one of the reasons why he won a Pulitzer Prize and eleven Grammys, and why some of the music I listen to, yeah, I know some of the language you guys don't like, but it is empowering for me, is because a lot of what is discussed is, in Kendrick Lamar's case, for example, one of his lyrics is, his father checked out at age nine, meaning he was dead, and he was living in a motel with his mom and didn't have a lot, and came out of that, not as a broken person, but as somebody who survived that and was able to be a contributing member of society. I find that to be empowering. The J. Cole song that you guys quoted that you dislike so much, the premise of the song is about breaking free of the bonds of, for lack of a better word, slavery. In a lot of ways, that has to do with poverty. It's not a racial thing so much as it's an economic thing, but predominantly, when we look around in our county, the faces that are enveloped in abject poverty do come in a particular shade more often than not. And that happens to be the town that I grew up in, in Avanale, which was predominantly migrant farm families, and the majority of people that live there live well below the poverty line. So, when somebody likes to lecture me about what is appropriate or what is not, really, you're denying my experience as a part of the reality that exists here. And I acknowledge that you have a different point of view, and you've walked through life in a different way than I have. But to deny that I, as well, have a very different point of view and might see things very differently than you do, it diminishes my voice and diminishes my reality to assuage your comfort. And that is not something I'm here to do. I'm not here to make everybody feel more comfortable. I'm here to help serve the community, and not all of the community has come from a place of affluence. And in fact, the majority of the community does not, though that oftentimes is not reflected in their votes, as the majority of our community still does not vote. In fact, our county has the unique distinction of being one of only two counties in the entire state of California to still be covered under the DOJ preclearance condition of the Voting Rights Act up until the 2014 SCOTUS decision. Why we were still covered under that act, mind you, was because historically, as in forever, the county has had less than fifty percent voter turnout for people of color, even though over sixty percent of our county is deemed as such. So, I'm not saying that that's being done for some evil purpose and somebody's, you know, moving the dials. It simply could be lack of information, apathy, lack of involvement, because a lot of other things might be going on in someone's life. I can acknowledge that it's not some grand conspiracy, but I would hope that you could also acknowledge that my point of view, while different, is valid and is real, and I don't expect you to understand it, but I do respect, I do expect some modicum of respect, because I'm duly elected, just as all of you are. And I'm not in any campaign cycle, I'm just trying to do a good job. And I had made known my fears of officers, and I felt as though I had my trust taken advantage of. If it was the case that you did it in like a text message, you could have said, don't do it, don't respond in this way, I want you to, right away, this needs to be done in an email. This isn't proper procedure. Because, you know, as a teacher, my proper procedure is to go to the teacher, and then the principal, and then you work your way up. You don't go straight to the supervisor if you're a parent, right? You gotta give everybody a chance to talk. So, I recognize that maybe that was a mistake on my part, going to, as a director first, rather than to the city manager, but it was an innocent mistake and not one that was made intentionally out of malice. And to take advantage of sort of my naivety, or really my trust at some point, and then flip it back on me instead of just talking to me, you know, I asked for the video of, somewhere along the line, a rumor was spread that I had a verbal altercation. And I knew that wasn't true, so I asked for a copy of the report and the video, and I was then told that none existed. So, when I'm told that there is an accurate description of how many times I've been pulled over, and I know for sure that that was one of those incidences, but there's no reporter video, you can understand why I'm at least skeptical and fearful. And I don't mean to make any accusations, I'm merely saying that part of my reality is being scared. Part of my reality is literally taking pictures or videos every time I see an officer kind of hanging out in a place that I did not normally see one. And that doesn't mean it's a conspiracy, it just means that's part of my reality now too. And I would like others to acknowledge that that's part of a reality for a large portion of the population, that there's a sense of fear. And it could be valid, it could not be valid, but it exists, it's part of the reality for a lot of people of our community. And rather than doing a he-said, she-said, back and forth, and play this out in some sort of gossip circle, I'm suggesting an acknowledgement of different points of views and saying, look, when we look at policy, and we will look at policy that if you really want to not make officers a punching bag and save lives, an acknowledgement that there is a change and a shift in the culture, and there is a change in the shift in people who are in leadership. And if we could at least take a look at some of the instances where, for example, I heard an officer once accuse, I like Beyonce, and I said, I like Beyonce, and he said that...
Councilor, I don't mean to cut you short, and I just want you to make sure you're keeping your comments brief and to the point.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say that it made me worried when an officer said that he thought Beyonce was against police officers. And when you talk about if I have a daughter and her listening to pop music that's on the radio and dance to Beyonce together, it worries me that the association with the music I like and listen to, and in fact, is very popular and plays on P-95 as part of the general atmosphere, that that could be seen as deemed immoral or cause for someone to maybe be more, held more suspicion than otherwise would be. I worry about that, and I question policies that would reinforce that. And I'm asking for a greater discussion about the types of policies that come from a point of view that you may not see the other side. And if we saw the other side, maybe we might have some better policies that would not only help the public not fear as much, but it would also help officers as well. And that's really what we're here for, we're here to make better policy decisions for our whole community. But...
Ms. Blair, I'm going to have to ask you to hurry your comments up, please.
Case in point.
You've been speaking for about, I don't know, how long? If you could make them direct and concise.
Case in point. Case in point. That's it. Go ahead.
I wasn't prepared to say this tonight, but I'm going to after what you just stated, the acknowledgement of different points of view and being fair. That's, that's, only thing was brought up in the past was about your comments as a city council member, using your title. I don't care what music you listen to, I don't care, I don't care if you listen to the dial tone on the telephone, I really don't. My thing is, is what I'm looking at is, is when you're representing the twenty-six-thousand, three-hundred and somewhat people in the city of Lemoore, you represent them all, okay? You talk about your poverty and stuff, there's a lot of people in this town I knew grew, I know grown up in poverty, so have I, okay? But I worked my way up, okay? And I try to, I am where I am today, okay? I don't forget about those people back. We do try to make things in our city to help those. But to use that, and then what you said about the police department there, once again, you can disagree with me, and guess what, I respect that, but, but when you, when you, when you go back and you start using your position as a city council member, you know, and I want you, I would like for you to acknowledge that and other people's points of view. You say there, you have your points of view, and what about the other people and their points of view that don't, don't agree with what you say, okay? So, to me, you know, it falls both ways, okay? But the thing about it is, is whatever you say as a council member, that's all I asked for, that's all I asked for, is that what you say as a council member, you say it with, with, you're representing all the people of Lemoore. And, and you know what, it was already said, it's for the record, that's all I got to say about that. Thing I got, I went to the Kings County Commission on Aging Boarding, I have nothing to report out on that one. Went to Kings County Economic Development Corporation, I passed out to all the council members and a clerk. They're, they're doing a, I think they're doing a pretty good job promoting Lemoore for economic development. What I gave the city clerk is for public record, if anybody wants to take a look at what we have here, some of the things they're, they're looking at, possible pet food distributor, recycled materials manufacturer, some of those kind of things for the city of Lemoore. And that's why we need a good, strong council, we need a council that's going to work together, okay? That supports this kind of stuff, okay? And, and, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
May I have an opportunity to respond? I'll be brief. I just wanted to...
As long as I have an opportunity to respond.
I just wanted to...
You, you had your turn, Mr. Brown has had his turn, Mr. Chedister, it's your turn now.
No report.
Thank you.
You want to call him the Mr. Mayor? Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Okay, city manager, you expound on parking to the staff, what were you addressing? Can you come straight with that one? What was that about? You, you...
You're talking about earlier in messaging?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's in our ordinance that if there's a, that city, if city council has, bless you, has an issue with staff, that they're supposed to work it through the city manager.
Who's staff? Who you consider staff?
Staff is anybody that reports to me, an employee of the city.
Employee.
Employee of the city. So, that's what I was referring to. So, if you had an issue with, with Ms. Spear, then instead of calling her, talking to her individually, you'd come to me and work through me.
I'm glad you said that, yeah. I think we're good, though. Anyway, what I'm here is, it might take me a long time, you guys have to deal with me with this situation. I want to expound on the situation that took place. I say about a month and a half ago, we were, we was talking about this, and I brought up, well, let's do an investigation and see where this is going. And so, the next city council meeting, last city council meeting I went to, I came late because I had, my wife was having issues, you know, for the pregnancy. And so, I came in because I was watching it on FaceTime, what was going on, and I was like, oh, God. I said, how you feeling, babe? She's like, oh, I'm feeling a little bad. I said, drink some more warm milk, okay? We're going to be all right. I think we, I think I need to go. And I felt upon myself to go to the city, you know, Lemoore's my town. If you talk about Lemoore, you're talking about me. I'm sorry. Our family been here since the forties. All came from Hollis Corner. Where's Hollis Corner at, guys? Okay. Well, my buddy, me and him made cookies back there, we're all there. Anyway, we was in home ec together, so, home economics. Well, anyway, we burned up a lot of stuff in class together, but that's besides the point. We were raised out, we were raised out there, our family does some great things out there, from picking cotton to growing up in poverty, I understand all that. And Mrs. Blair, I want to let you know, it, it hurts me to hear what you're going through, because I didn't go through it, and none of my family went through that, and what I, what I want to tell you is this, I missed, because I came late, I missed what, chief, you had said that you guys did an investigation, and it came out, false information. Now, this is going to go farther, we have an outside source out of Kings County, not Kings County, come in and do a full investigation, because we don't have time for this. I want to stand by my police officers when they're right. And what I see right now, I'm standing by you guys, because what I seen, what you presented to us, was right. I just didn't see it at the time. So, I couldn't put my input on that, chief. All officers risked their lives. Holly made a great point about the fire department. We shouldn't even hold our heads up if we're not taking care of you, fire department. Volunteers at that. I didn't know nothing about that from our city manager. We need to know everything that goes on, city manager, I'm talking to you.
I hear you.
Okay. When it comes to our volunteer fire department. I'm going to stand by my police department, and I'm going to say this, I'm not a guy that I heard on the radio broadcast. We don't have a strong mayor system here. I'm not a guy, I don't, and I'm sorry to say this, this is what gets me where I am today, because people know I'm going to tell the truth, because I'm not talking for Eddie, I'm talking for the city of Lemoore. I don't come out as Eddie, I come out as the city of Lemoore. I'm going to stand by my city, I'm going to stand by my fire department, I'm going to stand by my constituents when they're right. But if they're wrong, a real friend would tell them when they're wrong. If I'm wrong, I'll tell you I'm wrong. Many times I came up, I was on this diet, and I said, forgive me for what I said, I was wrong. This would be over right now if we just, okay, forgive me, I was wrong. Ain't nothing wrong with saying that. But when you get, and now you got the radio and the TV broadcast stations, I didn't even know the TV channel, I don't know, Channel thirty or Channel twenty-six is involved with this now. But it is embarrassing to our city, Lee Moore, not Lemoore, Lee Moore, that this could be going on in our town. Our town stands for something, we're a God-fearing town, and we stand for something, we have values, we work with each other. Me and Daryl walking home from school, if one of our parents, if his parents see me acting up, I'm going to get it from his parents, and then I'm going to get it from my parents. That's how we were raised. We got out of values now, we're not in that, and I'm not going to hold you no longer, but I'm not trying to preach to you, but I'm trying to let you know, enough is enough. We have to move on. And for somebody to get on the radio, I don't know what radio station that was, to say that I looked away and said, I agree with what Mrs. Councilman Blair said? I didn't agree with that. I don't know where they got that from. And for them to say, I don't know who this Councilman Neil is, but he wants Lemoore to be a crack town. For them to say that on the radio about me, you guys don't know my town, you come to my town radio broadcast station, and you tell my city that I want my town to be a crack town and see what you get. My town loves me, and I love them. God bless.
Thank you. All right, I'm not going to talk about this anymore, I'm going to talk about some other things, some positive things, which we should be talking about. So, first of all, I want to mention that the Lemoore Middle College academic decathlon team went out and represented our town very well. They got first place, was it, in Division Four, back east somewhere?
They got first place, was it, in Division Four, back east somewhere? Did a really great job, studied really, really hard, went through a couple different levels, locally, state, nationally. So, I was hoping I could get consensus from the rest of the council, that we might be able to bring that group of kids here.
Absolutely.
And recognize them.
Yes.
And recognize them.
Concur.
Please, that would be nice. Okay, thank you. The other thing is too, I'd wanna get... I'd like to see about getting consensus. I talked... I think I've mentioned once before about this young lady that I have become acquainted with through my work and through Communities of Excellence Project that I'm on at work. Her name is Dr. Crystal Hernandez. Some of you may know her, be familiar with her. She happens to be from the city of Avonel, and she's a doctor. She's worked her way up, had a very difficult upbringing, like a lot of us have, and she's made a lot of herself. She's done a really great job with Champions Recovery, if you haven't heard about it. They do a lot of really good things. They run a lot of different programs around the county, and I was really taken by what she's doing as far as even going into economic development with that project. They're actually getting a restaurant built, remodeled in the city of Hanford, and they're gonna be putting people to work over there. So, I was hoping that we could maybe get consensus for her to come here and do a study session with us, what projects they have available, and maybe perhaps even some even economic development opportunities. I think she's just a really great example of what can happen with cooperation, collaboration, wanting to work with people. She's definitely a shining light, and I think we would all benefit from her. So, if we could get her over here.
I'd like to meet her. I concur.
All right, thank you.
Since I've known her since I was a babe and played basketball together in school, I absolutely would love to see her again. I think she's doing amazing work, and I love to sing her praises all the time, and so, good to see her again.
I concur.
Okay, thank you. All right, I like the... Maybe you can get ahold of her, or I can, and get put her in touch, and we can get her on study session at some point.
Sounds good.
All right, and then, city manager, you wanna have a few minutes?
Yeah, so, real quick, if the council would afford me the... A few minutes here. You know, this whole issue about the stop that took place between one of our sitting council members and the Lemoore Police Department, it escalated fairly rapidly, okay? I just wanna give a little history, because we're not talking about all these tweets and stuff. What the issue was that day was my staff coming to me with an issue with a sitting council member and their demeanor, their texts, and their accusations. And the evidence at the PD's does not support the claim, I'm sorry, it just doesn't. But this has nothing to do with anything other than that. You know, Daryl Smith is our police chief, he's my police chief. This is the best police department in the state of California, and I'll say that every day and twice on Sunday. And if you wanna have... If we wanna engage in moral character and debates, that's not the guy any of us wanna fight. He is top-notch and outstanding, and I can't sit here and listen to our police department get... I can't do it, I can't do it, I'm sorry. But I'm just asking that this stop, you know? My comment earlier was about Facebook, you know? Staff does not need to come up on anybody's Facebook feed as far as I'm concerned. If there's an issue, come right out, say it to the face of the person. I thought we talked this out and it was a done deal, but apparently it wasn't because the only reason the police chief came to me is he didn't wanna have a debacle on Facebook. He wanted the rest of the council to know what happened on the stop, so we wouldn't be here where we are, what, a month later? It's getting tiring, okay? I don't follow any of you guys on Facebook. Well, I take that back. Mayor, I think I do follow you on Facebook. I'm not on there very often. But I don't have to follow people on Facebook because when somebody gets what I would say, our constituents, our residents, out of line, I get 13 phone calls, 17 screenshots, emails, and it's tiring, okay? I don't have the time to try to go back and explain why we behave the way we do. I'm just that, we're adults, can we just drop this and move forward and be done with it? Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
That's it. All right, that's it, guys. Thanks for being here. See you next time.